Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the December 19th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We're going to start off with our invocation and our pledge by Mr. Tom Cleveland.
Please stand with me if you can. Tonight, I just wanted us to spend a second during the holidays, you know, being grateful. A lot of times, we hustle and bustle through the year, and this time of year, we start to slow down. The office gets a little quieter. A lot of us are taking off time, wanting to see family or have family coming in. I had my son coming in from Arizona yesterday, and with the power outage, I was a little concerned about that. But, you know, the graces of who I serve, he was able to get here, and I was impressed and got him here at home, and it's interesting to have him at home now. But, you know, a lot of us look around and think about others, and tonight, I actually want to say a thank you to Nancy. She's got a birthday coming up and celebrating that in her own special way, and I appreciate her service here on the board and what she's done. So, I just want to be, show a little public gratitude tonight. But take a second here and spend this moment of silence with me in your own way, thanking those that you're grateful for. Thank you. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's a move.
Second? Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. All in favor? That's unanimous. We'll start out next with our recognitions. Mr. Joey Perko leading us.
It's a pleasure to be able to recognize folks in our system for the great things that they do. We have four very important recognitions to present this afternoon, and I'm going to go ahead and start with our first one. Our first recognition is for the Distinguished Breakout School. This award is presented by the Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals, and the criteria that the schools must meet and demonstrate through evidence are as follows. They have to be collaborative leadership, personalization in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. This year, the Georgia Association of Secondary School Principals recognized nine breakout middle schools in the state, and we want to congratulate our very own Little Mill Middle School on being selected as one of those winners. The GASSP also awards and honors schools at a distinguished level. So, these schools demonstrate a commitment to meeting the needs of all students, and there were three schools in the state that this year, and Little Mill Middle School also was awarded with this distinction. So, we're doubly excited about that. So, at this time, I'd like to congratulate Little Mill Middle School and ask Mr. Mike Sloot and Kelly Wilson, I think they're here to receive this award, so if they would come down and receive the award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. She did all the work. Congratulations, Mr. Sloot.
Congratulations, Mr. Sloot.
And if we, I'm not sure if we do, but if we have anyone here to, in support for Little Mill, would you stand so we can thank you? I know we have Mike and Kelly, so thank you very much again. Congratulations. Our next award goes to Lambert High School. Lambert's Medical Science Academy won the 2017 TAG STEM Award for 2017. So, we want to congratulate Lambert for this very prestigious award. We'd like to ask Janet Standevan, the biotech teacher and advisor, I know that she's here, along with, I know their principal is here, Dr. Gary Davison, but Ms. Standevan, if you would come forward to accept this recognition. And again, I know that Dr. Davison's here, but if we have anyone else, raise your hand, wave at us to support Lambert, so thank you very much. Our next recognition is a Reach Employee of the Month, and of course, we want to thank Nellie Nissan for supporting our Reach Employee of the Month. They're a very generous supporter of the Forsyth County school system, and we appreciate their support and their, for the Reach Employee of the Month and recognizing these folks. So, I'd like to read a few of the things that were submitted on behalf of this Reach employee. I can't read all of them. You can see how small the print is, and there's five pages of this. So, it's a lot. But I'll read just a couple or a few. Says this, "This person is always there to help everyone in need. She goes above and beyond the duties of a custodian. She helps students in the hallway, fills a morning duty so that others may have some free time, and helps children eat their lunch safely. She definitely contributes to the Johns Creek Elementary community. She always interacts with coworkers, staff, students in a positive and giving manner." Another person said, "She is an all-around good person. She makes everyone and everything and everyone happy around the building. There is no job too big, too small for her. You only have to ask once, and it's taken care of. We appreciate her every single day. She does, she does for everyone in this building without ever a complaint or hesitation. She is the backbone of Johns Creek Elementary." Another person said, "She engages with students and staff daily. She's, she is a recognized presence in our school and contributes to our positive atmosphere. I am new to the school, and she has made me feel very welcome. She has helped me with any issues I have had. She always makes sure that if a problem arises, it's taken care of right away with minimal impact on instruction. I really appreciate all she has done for me." And one last one said, "She goes above and beyond to make sure our, our school runs smoothly. She's approachable and always available to help. She does everything with a smile. She cares about the children and the adults. She's very, that is very evident in the way she interacts with them. She has built trust and a good relationship with her team. She is more than deserving of this honor." Help me congratulate our Reach Employee of the Month, Ms. Betty Hodgkinson from Johns Creek Elementary. If you're here to support Ms. Hodgkinson, would you please stand so we can thank you for supporting her? Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to another great system sponsor, Dr. Invis Rizmaro. So, if you would come forward. We appreciate your support and sponsorship to Forsyth County School System.
It's a real pleasure to be here again, and some familiar faces starting to be familiar from coming here for a few years and also from the I Room, so thanks to everybody that came to I Room, not to mention the golf tournament. I'm Jim Maro, I'm a family doctor in town with my wife Peggy. Five years ago, we started a benefit to raise money for kids in the county that didn't have either devices or internet, that they needed to do their homework, do their lessons and so forth, and we've been just unbelievably blessed by this, much more so than the school ever has. And we're just really excited today because we've finally accomplished something this year we've been, she especially, has been trying to accomplish every single year. So, Peg, if you'll grab that into this thing. For the first time this year, it's over $50,000. This is the culmination of an awful lot of hard work. We've been just blessed with sponsors and supporters and staff and, and people here in the county that have just helped us along the way every way they possibly could. If I didn't mention Megan Farmer by name, I'd be just really amiss. But it's really been the whole county that has pulled together and done this for these children, and I understand that the problem with internet in the home is not as bad as it used to be, so hopefully, devices will be coming along, and you'll find that students are able to do more with their time and can get their homework and their assignments done, and we're just really blessed to be a part of it. So, thanks for letting us be part of that.
Okay, as the board takes a seat, we'll move on to our Superior Performance Spotlight this evening. It's presented by Susan Darlington and our Project Life.
Thank you for having me tonight. We're really excited to present Project Life to you, but before we start, I just want to thank each and every one of you for your decade, can you believe it's been a decade, since we've had Project Life? Ten years, and you guys have supported us ever since, and we could not do this without your support. So, we're here to talk to you a little bit about the program and tell you what's happened since the very beginning, and before we move on, I just want to first recognize our teachers and our students, because they are a big part of this program. In fact, they are the majority of this program and how successful it is. So, if our teachers will first stand, our Project Life teachers? And then, we also, our students, if you will stand, the ones that could make it tonight. So, just a quick overview of what Project Life is. So, we do source students ages nineteen, eight months to twenty-two. They come in August, and they attend a two, a two-week orientation, and what we really try to do is teach them job skills and soft skills, anything that's going to provide opportunities for employment. That typically, when anybody graduates high school and they're looking for a job, we kind of assume that they all have these soft skills, but in reality, many people do not have those soft skills that are going to help a person be retained and employed on the job. So, that's our number-one goal is that they are receiving these soft skills. But it's through that collaboration with vocational rehabilitation and through the job site. We're going to talk about each job site, because when we first started, it was Monir Tech, and Monir Tech was a great job site. It was one year, and then we got that phone call from Siemens, and then Siemens had this huge building for us that gave us so many more opportunities, and it just went from there, and it's, it's been wonderful. But the basics of Project Life is to have that seamless transition where they are, they understand the nuances of the job, they understand who their vocational rehabilitation counselor is, because that stays with them for the rest of their life, those services do. So, we get them connected, and they, they build these relationships month after month, and as we see that they're getting ready to graduate, we start working on a job plan for them, and we want to help them reach their career goals. Once they graduate from us, VR or Vocryhave is still with them, and they're helping them get those jobs, and if they need further training, they're there. If they decide in ten years they want to try a different career, Vocryhave is still in play, which is a beautiful thing. So, it's really important to have all of those pieces together for Project Life to work successfully. I can't say enough about the business, too, which we will get into in a second. But this is what's so great about Project Life, just looking at the statistics and where we've come. We've had fifty-seven total graduates. The only ones that we could not account for were the ones that two ever moved, and they could not go through the whole program, and then one was unemployed just because we know transportation in the county, and they just could not get to the job. So, we're working on ways to try to relieve that through the dialyze. I think they've had a lot of conversations to help with that, and so I, I see things changing in the future with that, and then one was, it was just a mental health issue and nothing anybody could avoid. So, realistically, we've had a great success rate, and we just see it moving beyond that, and we have some graduates that are going to be graduating this December, and so our statistics are going to change even more, and then in May, so it's going to grow even more. We had sixty-one total participants, and when you see the numbers with sixty-one, we learned in the very beginning that we wanted so many people to participate in Project Life, and we still try to give every opportunity for every single student that enrolls in the program, but we have to be very understanding of what, what it is about those behaviors. Can they perform, and can they, is there a safety concern? And so, we realized there were some things that we needed to do as far as screening, just because we felt that they were not safe on the job site. So, once we realized that, and we worked with Vocryhave, and they participate in the work you guys before they enroll in the program, and we can learn those skills, it also gives us an opportunity to talk to the school and say, you know what, let's give this a semester, and let's come back, and let's see if we can work on these skills so that we can give them the opportunity to come into the program. So, we don't refuse anyone and then just walk away. We do try to give everyone an opportunity. So, we have four job sites. We have Siemens Industry, which is over on McFarland, and then across the street is the one that is Ridgeland, which is the energy. Then we have the Hill Center, which the Hill Center students are the ones that come to the Board of Ed as well, and they do the snack cart. And then they also train at the academy, and they do custodial training, so, and you'll hear about some of that with teaching our students how to learn the skills of custodial work so that it can transfer within the school system, so we understand the standards. So, that just reminds me, too, when we're training on the job site, we do not modify. We do not modify any standards. They must meet all standards, and that's huge. We also have Northside Forsyth Hospital. That has been wonderful. They have been just wonderful partners to us, so I can't wait for you to hear about that program, too. So, we're going to start with, very quickly, I've asked each teacher to come and just walk through, and I'm going to have Ann Rice. Ann Rice is our first-year teacher in Forsyth County. She was teaching in Fulton County, so we're happy to have her.
Yes, that's what I was going to tell you guys, is that I've had the pleasure of being hired on as a Siemens Industry job coach and teacher for this year, and we're starting our tenth year with Siemens Industry, and over those ten years, the interns have had multiple job rotations to be able to learn just numerous jobs that Susan was talking about. We have some pictures of the interns working. The top two pictures on the left, and the bottom picture on the left, I know you guys have those up there, but those are the interns working out on the shop floor. Siemens Industry has a very large manufacturing shop floor that the students have an opportunity to learn safety and protocols that are out there when they're working out there, but also have an opportunity to work alongside other employees that are there. This year, we have, we're currently working in those other three pictures. The top right one is out in receiving, and our interns intake and track and monitor all of the packages that come into the building, and we deliver them to all of the corporate employees. So, some of the packages, they stay out on the shop floor, but anything that goes to a corporate employee that's over in the office park, we deliver all of that to them. The bottom right-hand picture is the snack cart, and that goes around in the afternoon, and we collect snacks and different treats, very similar to the snack cart that comes out to you guys, but we get it from our cafeteria company, and we go around to the four floors of the building, and we sell snacks in the afternoon for anyone, but maybe work through lunch, or, you know, a lot of times, it's just, just wants to have a time and a chance to talk with our students. And then the bottom middle one is working in the kitchen. We have an intern that's, this is his second year actually working in the kitchen, and he works alongside the deli chef, and he makes the sandwiches of the day, he sets up the salad bar, and he also serves the Siemens employees at lunch at the deli line, and he is in the cafeteria the entire time. He goes, we have a meeting in the morning, and he goes there, and he works alongside those Siemens employees the entire day. Again, we have some more pictures over on the left of the students working out on the shop floor and organizing the manufacturing supplies. In the middle, you can see the intern doing the custodial jobs that Susan was saying that we do, and just teaching them those basic skills of cleaning and custodial that is, that are so crucial for any job out there in the future. And then we also have interns that clean and restock the break rooms, so that's the bottom floor. The student is cleaning the shop floor break room, and the, the bottom picture, excuse me, is the student cleaning the shop floor break room, and then the top right picture is restocking the break room out on the shop floor. We actually have eight break rooms in Siemens, and it takes the entire afternoon and the entire morning to clean all eight, because the shop floor break room is so extensive with cleaning, and they have so much turnaround in there. And then that bottom right-hand picture is what we believe is one of the most important parts of Project Life, and that's the students and the, our interns interacting with those employees. We, like I said, we deliver packages to the entire building. That's twenty administrative assistants, and when we're working in the cafeteria, that's those five cafeteria employees, that's the, you know, four C D R E guys that are maintenance, and we really believe that that interaction and the opportunity to be able to have our guidance with communication and how you interact with adults and other employees as you get older and you become an adult is so crucial. But thank you again for your time. You know, the next location?
And Erin just reminded me, I had to speak to directors around Georgia, and they asked, how do you keep a program like this going? And I said, besides a partnership, hire very good teachers. You have to trust them, and they are out on that site. PR is big, but they also need to be able to teach and build those relationships, so you can tell that they know what they're doing. So, I'm going to ask Hope Dooley to come and talk about Hill Center.
Yes. One of our job sites at the Hill Center is NCR, and that stands for National Cash Register, and what we do at NCR is we repair and re-manufacture credit card kiosks and registers, and our interns support NCR in a variety of ways. They learn manufacturing skills in plastic recovery, in receiving, and, and also, they help unload the truck, and, and they help with the storage devices, they package hard drives and send them out to Walmart, so there's a lot of different skills that they're doing at NCR. We also, one day a week, we have our snack cart, and we come here to the board, and the interns are developing skills with sales, money handling, product development, and organization. And then we also go to the Forsyth Academy, and that's where we train with custodial skills, and one of our recent graduates is now working full-time at Davis Creek Elementary as a custodian. So, that's kind of, you know, some of the things that we do at the Hill Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, we have Lori Tipton.
Hey, I work at Siemens Energy, and almost also first year to Project Life. I work with Stacy Martin, and at Siemens Energy, we work there three days a week, and we do a bit of the same that other teachers have already spoke about, but we do a lot of office duties where, like stocking and taking inventory of break rooms. We don't do as much custodial there, but they take a lot of work from the regular employees, and they support Siemens in a big way in the office environment. They miss us when we're gone, so we know we do a good job. They stock copiers, they dust, they move tables, whatever they need us to do, we've got somebody to do it, so we have a lot of learning experiences. And our group is fortunate enough to work in another location at NCR two days a week when Hope's group is not there, and this gives them a large variety of work experience, but also social experience, working in different environments with different types of employees and doing a lot of different things, so we get a big, we're very abundant in work experience.
Thank you. And last, we have Mary Phillips.
Hello. This is our second full-time year over at Northside Hospital. We are there five days a week, and there is enough work for us to be there 24 hours a day. It's an amazing site. They're very supportive of the project and the school system and all of our students that are there. In our pictures, we are looking at five different areas in the hospital that we work extensively in. We are down in materials management, where we take and receive every medical supply that comes into Northside Hospital. Our interns down there use the computers to print out the labels for the charge codes on every product that is charged to every patient. We take those products after we label them, and we either put them on the shelves, and it's very specific, those thousands of items that come in where they go, so they're, our students are working very hard, learning a lot of different skills. If we don't show them, we might bring them up to the floors and actually deliver them to the nurses, and our interns are doing that independently this year. We also work in the kitchen and do food prep at the hospital. We've got two of our students who are actually making all of the foods with the fryer and the grill. We do all of the chicken strips, hamburgers, hot dogs, all of the french fries and onion rings. Project Life does all of them at the hospital during the hours that we're there, so it's been a great success. We also do other food prep. We do all of their cupping, so if you are there and you're getting a taco salad, the chances are that one of these great students here did the sour cream, the salsa, the guacamole, or one of the other ingredients that you're going to be enjoying. We also work in the doctor's lounge, which is very prestigious. One of our students that's going to speak to you in just a moment, Maddie, has been in the doctor's lounge a couple of years now, and they absolutely adore her and the other student that we have in there. They take care of filling up all of the snacks, and you'd be surprised how unhealthy the doctors are. We go through hundreds of candy bars a day, and snack bars and sodas, and you name it. Maddie takes care of all of that. They also do the hot bar, the private hot bar in the doctor's lounge, and the salad bar. So, all of those foods, they prep, they cut, they, they put together salads, they keep it stocked. It's, it's really wonderful and amazing how much they do. We also work for E V S, which is the custodial area, and we keep the main entrance from the women's center all the way down, clean, dusted, swept up. We do all of the tables, all of the, the sweeping in the cafeteria, and keep everything stocked, all condiments. We make teas, coffees, all of it. So, it's a beautiful site, and we love being there, so we thank you for your support of the program.
So, instead of me sharing the skills that our students learn, I asked Maddie to come up here and talk to you about the skills that she's learned at Project Life.
Hello. Good evening. All, all skills are soft skills, vocational skills, communication skills, self-awareness, self-advocacy, independence, and personal responsibility in setting roles, and thank you for this wonderful opportunity.
So, Maddie didn't tell you that she presented her last I P meeting and had this huge, powerful PowerPoint that showed all the skills that she learned, and I said, oh my goodness, you have to do this in front of H R, because I was really impressed. And so, that leads me to having Beth come up here, Beth Abear, talk to you. I'm just going to cut through some of the PowerPoints, because I know we're running out of time, but her experience through H R with Project Life.
So, we are excited to let you know that we are now partners with Project Life as an employee, as an employer. So, you know, I've always seen it from the other side with the schools, and I knew how successful it was, because some of these students were mine, and, and so I was really excited about it. When we got, a couple of years ago, we talked to Susan, sat down and looked at, you know, what could we do? Some of these businesses are hiring some of these students for the same kind of jobs that we can't fill. And so, I remember Mr. McKnight and I sat across from the table, and we, after we heard, we were like, why aren't we doing this? And why wouldn't we do it? And so, we got, we got really excited about it, as you can see, just working with some of these students, and you're used to being around them as well, because they work with us here at the school system, wanting to have them in our system as an employee. So, in June or July of this past year, we were able to hire our first student. We had placed him at the elementary school, and they, he did a great job, and so we have hired him. We are looking at two other students, hopefully, Maddie will be employed with us soon, we're working on, on that, in food service, and then we're also looking at another student in custodial work. So, we'll hope to have three placed by the end of this year. Very excited about that.
And that's all I have. I just want to, again, thank you so much for your time and for your support.
Oh, Susan, thank you. Most of us can remember when it started, and then we're just, thanks to you, the man out there in the audience that was so instrumental at Siemens, and going to that first meeting and just crying, because it was and just crying because it was just such a beautiful thing to see. And just to see them now, we miss the graduation. Do you still do that?
We do. We'll be giving invitations. We've already saved the dates out there.
Congratulations to all of you for what you do. That's just fabulous.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
I do remember the Siemens employees saying that they miss the students when the vacations and stuff are on. Not like having them not there.
Trust me, when the snack cart doesn't show up on time Thursday morning, we get a little nervous.
I've actually seen your money. We'll give him his money so he can still have snacks up until I hear it. Alrighty. Alright, up next, we have the...
Do you want to take a break?
Should we take a break?
Yeah, just a minute.
Alright. We'll take a little brief, brief ass break so that anybody, like, leave before the business portion of our meeting. Actually, we have the consent agenda. Has everyone had time to review the consent agenda? You have a motion to approve?
To move.
Motion by Tom, a second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. Public participation, do we have anything standing? Then next up is presentation and discussion, starting out with Steve Atha for the finance report.
Out of the blue. He's bringing more money. I have to follow a $50,000 check from Susan Darlington with the pressure on me. I'm happy to be here to present the financial report for the month of November. First page is the statement of cash receipts and disbursements in the system operating account. Beginning balance started out roughly $22 million. We added, I'll just follow it with the cursor, roughly $22 million, added roughly $165 million, and dispersed around $36 million, leaving a balance of $151 million in the system operating account.
That was a good month.
Yes, it was a very, very good month. November is always notable for the rather large influx of property tax that comes in. This number last year was $129 million, so it's up 11.5%, which is great. And then in the spirit of gratitude, I point out, you know, we do get donations. Thank you, Mr. Mall, for the check if you're still here. Thank you anyway. But another nice donation, $46,000 was received this month. And then Sony EMC pays a patronage dividend once a year. These are the unusual items in this, in the month of cash receipts. So it was a big month. Cash disbursements are right around, where they usually are, right around $33, $36 million, right in that range. $31 million of this, these two figures, is payroll, payroll checks, and payroll overhead, the taxes, FICA, retirement, state health benefit plan. Then the next page is the breakdown of the revenue, the detail. Again, you see the most notable item is this item, $165 million in ad valorem taxes received in the month of November. Actually, that's year-to-date, it's $147 in the month of November. In a perfect world, if all our receipts were received for granted, this column right here would reflect 41.67% five months out of 12. But as you can see, not everything conforms to that, most notably the property taxes. The bulk of that is received in November. The other large item is the Q B E state grant money that's received, and that's roughly 16, 16.7 billion per month. But that's tracking more on a more or less even basis throughout the year. The next slide is the year-to-date budget report. This focuses on the functional area expenditures. So this is the original budget, original, and then revised. It's been revised, just not materially, but it has been revised slightly. The next column reflects the year-to-date actual. We spent $167,589,901. The encumbrance column, this, that's a calendar jargon for basically what's in the pipeline, getting ready to be spent. And then the last column reflects what's remaining in our budget. Again, in a perfect world, this, if everything tracked on a parata basis, this column would be 41.67%. Most of these categories conform to that, but if you look at this bottom number, the total expenses, that's really very, very, very close. Also notable about this slide is that if you take the total amount spent in the instructional area, this, and actual expenditures and what's been encumbered, if you take the sum of these two and add it to the sum of the total expenditures and encumbrances, if you divide these two by the total expenditure, it's 73% instructional, which is often people take note of. It's pretty strong.
Above the state average.
Yes. Okay. The next slide is the debt service and cash analysis. We do have a checking account, or bank account, that's dedicated to debt service. It began the year with $8,338,000, actually, the month with $8,338,107. There were some large collections due to the November phenomenon. So the total additions, $20,478.718, yields a total balance in that account of $28,814.114. These two items, I'll cover on the next slide. And then just to note that there were no payments of principal and interest on our bonds during the month of November.
And the next one is about February?
I believe so. I believe so. The next slide, this slide is bond and splice investments. The money's collected and spliced are stored in the L G I P accounts, investment accounts sponsored by the state. The earnings on these accounts are the only additions except for in splice five, and there were, there was $2,988,562,000 collected during the month of November. And it usually track, well, we'll get to that slide for splice next. This slide reflects collections on splice five during the month of November. It says splice four there, it should be splice five, just for the record. But $2,988,562 was collected last month, was $3,112,752. So we're a little down from the previous month, $124,190. And then the total year-to-date collected in splice five is $12,539,594. The next slide indicates the activities at the school. Twenty-one elementary schools, they brought in $829,540, spent $770,000, leaving a net increase of $60,000, and a balance of $4,076,854. And then the cash receipts and disbursements for the middle and high schools. Both of these areas were up. The middle schools brought in $605,0096. They spent $478,237, leaving a remaining balance of $1,908,881. They're up $128,000 this month. And then the high schools brought in $512,400. They spent $471,664, leaving a balance of $3,553,378. They're up $40,000. And the last slide is just a summary of what I just mentioned. That should say November. But all the schools, it looked like a pretty standard month as they go. Nothing really unusual. All the other items I would mention in the finance department is FY17 financial audit should be finished at the end of this month or in early January. And then after that, we'll start working on the FY19 budget.
Somebody just finished that.
We did. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the draft bond project list. Dr. Bearden and Mr. Amerson.
Okay. Tim's going to help me out on this one. He's going to handle the slides, and so if you could pull that up, I'd appreciate it. Just a little history on the first slide about referendum voting. As you know, in last November, 2016, the splice passed, so that went into effect July 1, 17. And Steve just gave a report on the initial revenue for splice. In FY17, we did retire three bond issues, which helped build us 16 new schools over the years. And I think this next statement's pretty telling about our growth. Since 1993, we have built 31 new schools and, of course, opening two new schools in 2018. And so the 2018 bond timeline, we began this work back last spring, knowing we were going to be going to our citizens this May to ask our citizens to approve a new bond. We had several district committee meetings, reviewed all the needs of the individual schools. In November, we compiled a draft list. There was over $450 million in needs identified. And I have to say, listening to the presentations, there really wasn't anything that was presented that really wasn't a need. But you can only do what you can do. And so it was a very challenging process going through and establishing a list of priorities and having to eliminate some from the list of projects. Tonight, we're presenting the draft to you. What we are asking you to do is to take this over the next couple of weeks prior to our January retreat. If you have any questions about anything you see on the bond project list, if you could get those to Tim or myself prior to the retreat, that way we could compile that information for you. We'll have that discussion in January, at the January board meeting. We will, regular board meeting will ask you to approve the final bond list, and then we will start communicating that information to stakeholders, and then Election Day is May 22nd. So this is just kind of a highlight of the projects that we've identified. To invest in STEM education, again, that stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, half million dollars. School safety, $2 million there. Core technical education, $3.5 million. And obviously, the details of all of this is in your bond project list, which you should have a handout. Transportation, $13 million. Technology, $17 million. And the rest of it is around new schools and land and maintenance. So if we could go to the next slide. We've identified four new schools that we need to build in Forsyth County to keep up with our projected enrollment. Pulls Mill Elementary, as you know, we already own land for. We want to, if this, citizens, if you approve the bond project and our citizens approve it, we would build Pulls Mill and then Elementary School Number 23 and Middle School 11. We have not yet purchased land for those two schools, but we are in the market of doing so. Also included on the project list is East Forsyth High School. We do own land for that project off of Jodlem Down Road, correct? And also included in this addition would be, in the project list would be an addition at West Forsyth High School, which would bring our capacity at West up to about 2,500, correct, Tim? Other facilities with our growth, with Forsyth Academy and Forsyth Virtual, I believe it's time to invest in a new academies of creative education. If we were to do that, and we do own land behind the current facility, we would also bring our gateway program into that facility. That way, all three will be under one roof. The principal for ACE, Mr. Drew Hayes, is the principal of all of those programs, so it's best if they were under one roof. And that would free up space at the Hill Center, too. Our G Nats program continues to grow, and there's other needs we have in our system that we could address at the Hill Center. The other really exciting project that would be part of the new academies of creative education would be a performing arts center that would house roughly 2,000 spectators, participants, which is much needed in our community. This would be utilized by all of our schools throughout Forsyth County. Being right here adjacent to this property is very much centrally located, so we're very excited that this would be part of the bond project. Other items that we think our citizens, certainly our bus drivers, will be pleased with this, as will our students, is to retrofit all of our buses to make sure they all have air conditioning. That's a topic that comes up on a pretty regular basis. Tim and Bill have identified numerous maintenance items throughout the school system. Your typical stuff, H V A C, roof projects, asphalt replacement, those types of things. Our three oldest performing arts centers need to be updated as well. That would be included in the project list. All five of our existing high schools, the stadium, artificial turf, has outlived its projected life expectancy. They all need to be replaced. And then we knew this was coming as well with the new Alliance Academy. We need a parking deck there to handle continued growth. We're going to open next year with 600 students. We know we're going to have 1,200 students within two years. That along with junior achievement, we need the parking deck to handle that. Is that the last slide? Okay, here's the total. So we've identified $323 million worth of improvements. We would earn roughly $28 million in state funds. So our recommendation to the board, of course, you'll have the final say in this in January, is this bond would be for $295 million, as would the 2014 bond. The financing is structured not to increase the bond debt millage rate as long as the next splice is extended by voters. That will be very important as we market this to our community. We not only analyzed that, we also had Citibank, a partner of ours, do the financial analysis, and they have agreed that if the bond was $295 million, they would not foresee any need to increase the bond debt millage rate over the next several years. Again, as long as splice continues to be extended by voters, because we use splice to pay down the debt, and other projects as well, but primarily to pay down the debt. You see our projected enrollment and the need for additional facilities. We're currently at about 47,800. By 2022, we're projected to be at almost 56,000 students. So that is a real rough overview. I know you have the details in your, don't run away yet, Tim, they might ask you a question in your packet. But prior to reviewing, do you have any questions for Tim or myself? I know Bill is here as well.
Just one quick question on the new schools. That was, we have some land, like for East High, for example, but some we don't. So that, the money that's in there for the new schools is for some, both new and for the purchase of the land.
Yeah, Middle School Number 11, we've actually got a line item in the current bond to pursue land. We have been looking at some several sites there, working with our attorney, try to get that site. And that's actually going to be land purchased by this current bond, 2014, and then the construction by the 2018 bond. But then the other elementary school, Number 23, we do not have property for nor finance line item of money.
So it is being financed with bond money. The 23 will be?
Elementary 23 will be land and construction.
Right, okay.
And with this last, since we just renewed it, we're not, not 2022?
Correct.
So we've got a ways before, so we're not working into the current splice for quite a while.
Yes, we'll just start it. That's right, that's right.
We've got a ways to go for that.
Right. And Elementary 23 was one of those kind of on the cusp of, do we need it? And once we got this update of numbers from the state in June, it sealed the deal. We'd really need to go ahead and pursue that for the area down there around shallow, midway, Vicree Creek area is what we're targeting.
If you look at the numbers, they're showing it, yeah.
So what, most of these projects in the maintenance area were big-ticket items. They're not for everyday things like painting or things like that. Is that covered in our?
Now, we've had that conversation. We just do not feel like a bond is a good utilization for those types of projects. We are hopeful that for the FY19 budget, that we will include X amount of dollars for some painting projects. We do have some needs throughout the system. But we had that conversation. We didn't feel like it should be on a bond project list, that that should come out of our regular budget.
Well, I understand that. Well, I understand that, I just know that one of the original bonds we had ever done, part of it was for overall preventative maintenance things, and that's why I asked that question, because we did, I forgot when it was, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that was really done to bring everything up to par at one time, but we don't have to do that now, that was just a one-time thing, so that's why I asked.
A lot of the equipment we have, such as the energy recovery units, which we've gone to.
What is that?
It is a makeup air system, the EPA requires so much fresh air, it's brought into the building. In the south, we bring in all that humidity with it, so this allows us to take the condition air in the building and temper that air before we just exhaust it out the building. So it takes the condition air in the building, preheats or pre-cools the outside air, and we knock out the humidity as it comes in the building, so we're not having to overrun our air conditioning to keep up with the hot humid days.
Gotcha, that was just one of the questions going through the list.
They're big units, and they cover the entire classroom wing, for instance, some large areas, so they're large units that we work with.
So have, within the bond, is there just land for the one elementary school, since we got the other two? Or is there money to buy additional land for schools coming up?
In the bond, there's only land for the bond, however, within our SPOS, you know, there's a possibility that we would have enough in our SPOS to purchase additional land if necessary.
That would make sense, because by the time we get to that point, then we might need that future land, so the timings work.
Where's Middle School eleven?
Middle School eleven is in the west side of Coming, Scottsdale's kind of due west of the city of Coming. It'll go in that area that fits between Vicry Creek Middle, Liberty Middle, so north, and Otwell, and plan to relieve each of those three schools, primarily Liberty and Vicry Creek.
So just to kind of recap, tonight's, you know, the first time we're just going over it publicly, and now you'll have a chance to look at it. This will be a huge part of our January retreat, we'll get into the details of all of the different projects. And then at the regular January meeting, which I think is the twenty-third, which, if you, you have to approve it first, but most likely the twenty-third, then you would vote, and then we start the informing our community piece of it, and get out there and let them know what projects have been approved.
Well, you, the principals are probably obviously excited or interested in this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have been notified that, of the list, and they knew it was going to you tonight. And so, yeah, there's a lot of excitement around a number of these projects, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
All right, well, speaking of excitement, here's our good stuff, our CCRPI scores with Tim Keiser.
This is Wes Chris. And Beth.
Thank you, I'm glad you think this is exciting, it is exciting.
I did, I was very excited about your presentation.
It's our pleasure to present to you the College and Career Ready Performance Index. As you know, the CCRPI is really the measure that the state uses to determine if schools, systems, and the state are making progress in moving students to the next level. So in looking at that, the college and career, or the CCRPI, easier to say, is really something that they call a roadmap. For us, it does have a score, but it's really about the data. And looking at that data and breaking it down, disaggregating where areas are of need are, so that we can move students to the next level. As you know, CCRPI has lots of different components, but even better, it's changed each year. So Tim is gonna talk to you about the twenty seventeen score and how that was calculated, and then go over just very briefly how twenty eighteen will be a bit different.
Yes, you can see here, this is the two thousand seventeen CCRPI. So you had a total score possible of one hundred with ten additional points, the challenge points. So that's the achievement, progress, achievement gap, and challenge points. The three components at the bottom are informational components, so those don't feed directly into the score, but they are components that are in the report for the public to see. This page, this is a graphic that's helpful in looking at how CCRPI is scored, because it is quite complicated when you get down inside of the components. So fifty points came from achievement, which was broken down into content mastery, post readiness, and your graduation rate or predictor. So the bulk of this was the state assessment testing. Then the progress, the forty points, that's your SGP's, so this is looking at student growth. So we're comparing in progress how individual students scored compared to similar students around the state. So that's a, they're looking at the last two years of scores for that. So you can have, and that can be a complicated point, because students can achieve high but not demonstrate growth, and so they may have a lower SGP, so you might have high achievement but lower progress. And you can have the opposite, you can have lower achievement but demonstrate growth within that lower achievement and have high progress. Then you have the achievement gap, that's looking at the students who performed in the lowest quartile, and it's looking at their progress, once again, compared to the state average. And then the challenge points, that's the ten additional points that schools were able to apply for or either demonstrate through that subgroup performance. So this page, this shows once again the outstanding work in Forsyth County. We've got the, you can see the column for district score, along with each, that's the average of our, each school at that level. And then on the right side, you can see the state average, so we far outscored the state. And each one of those scores is the highest of any county school system in the state. So not only is our district score at the top, also, our elementary, middle, and high school is at the highest in the state for any county system.
Say that again, because it's just good to hear.
I will repeat it again, I have it on another slide. This slide talks about how we use the CCRPI data. And this first bullet, this is one of the most rewarding parts of my job, and what I do is, when that data comes in, I travel to schools and I meet with administrators and teacher leaders, and we look at the data, which, as Beth mentioned, we don't only look at it as this is good or bad. We use it to inform where we can adjust instruction, modify the instruction, based on the needs of the students. So it's nice to sit with those teams, look through the data and identify, there are always positive pieces of the data, but then we also get to see the areas where we can make improvements. We also have district-wide collaboration, so we present this data to, in principal meetings, assistant principal meetings, and also through vertical team meetings for each cluster. And that's a really nice piece, because what happens is, if we're in a meeting full of principals, we present this data and they have time to look at their data, and then at their, within their either vertical teams or their job alike, if it's just principals or assistant principals, they can talk about what they see in their specific data. We can identify areas where certain schools are excelling, where other schools may be able to look at the programs that they've implemented. And so it's a great collaboration that happens at the district level with the data. And then the third piece is to review and revise school improvement plans. So what we do is, we take the data that comes back, we look at the two thousand seven, in this case, the two thousand seventeen school improvement plans, and we reflect on, principals reflect on how they performed in relation to the goals, the SMART goals they had set in their plans. So then we use that information to identify what are the goals and what should the goals be in the two thousand eighteen plan. One nice thing about this, this comes back to that district collaboration, because when principals meet together, they have time to talk through their plans, and it's nice for them to be able to see that other schools are sharing some of the same goals, but then they can also look at how are those goals phrased, and what are the action items inside of those goals, another chance to collaborate. And we do, I do want to say, we do look at that, the school improvement plans, we think of them as a living document, because there is data after CCRPI and before that comes in throughout the year. And through those collaborative conversations and additional data that's received, a school may choose to modify their goals, because we don't wanna state a goal and then have to be stuck with that goal if a new piece of data arrived, and then we decide that we really need to focus our efforts somewhere different.
I wondered about that, because. Within this time of the year, they've already got their plans out, but they do have time to adjust before the tests are taken again in April. So is that enough time, I guess in some cases it would be, and others it's not.
And sometimes you're just starting something, and you look, and one of the reasons we changed the plan year from half the year was, starting it in twenty eighteen and looking January through December for our school improvement planning process, was so that you could get the data in, make sense of it, and then start in January.
Gotcha.
And work through the last half of the school year, really train, work hard, review your data in the summertime, then pick up where you left off and continue.
That makes sense. Yeah, that's what I was.
So this slide is our glows and grows, and once again, this is where we stated that we have the highest CCRPI score of all Georgia county systems. And then within each individual level of schools, we had the highest scores throughout the state.
And I'm gonna interrupt, one of the interesting things is, in the top six, three were city systems. So when we talk about city systems, they're nowhere near forty-seven thousand students.
No, not even close.
And then we saw a significant increase in little school subgroup performance. And so you'll see under the grows, we have student growth percentiles, I mentioned that earlier, because when you break down the scores of CCRPI, there's a benchmark for progress for that forty points that was available. So as the schools were looking at their data, they might have noticed that they, in Forsyth County, had exceeded the benchmark, so they received one hundred percent of those forty points. But they might have seen a drop in their SGP's overall. And so the reason I have that listed here is, what this allows us to do in looking at those student growth percentiles, regardless of the achievement level of the school, it informs us that we need to make sure that we are targeting instruction to students at all achievement levels. Not just to say, well, these are the students who I need to bring up to a higher achievement level, but even my students who are already at the distinguished level, I need to be challenging them to make sure that they grow compared to their peers around the state. The second bullet, the increased subgroup performance at all levels, right, so you noticed under a glow, I had middle school, I mean, that, we saw a huge improvement there. So we want to do the same thing with our elementary and high school. But this is a great segue into my next slide, because in the redesigned CCRPI, they've addressed one of the issues that existed in the older version, which is, the subgroup targets had been predefined over a six-year period. And so those targets grew each year regardless of the level of growth that was happening at the school. So an example is, if we take a school score who lost points in progress, well, we might look at that on the surface and say, it looks like we're not making progress with these subgroups. But when we get into the data and we look at their scores, we see that those subgroups at those schools, every subgroup made significant progress, they just didn't reach the target that had been predefined for all schools across the state. So under the new CCRPI, that calculation is changing, and each school will have its own baseline. And so we already know, it hasn't been published yet by the DOE, but we know how to calculate it, and we know that we will see a significant improvement with all of our schools in that area of progress next year.
So if you can explain more. Did I understand that, that each school district will define the baseline?
Well, the state will define the baseline, but it's based on a school's score. So the individual schools will receive a baseline. And what that looked like before was, they took the gap between where a school, where a subgroup was performing at a school, and one hundred percent, and they divided that gap in half, and then they took that amount and they divided it over six years. So there's these amounts that always, they often outpaced the subgroup performance. The new version, it takes the gap, so wherever a school scored this year, that's their number. You subtract that from one hundred, and multiply that by three percent, and then that tells you the amount of progress you need to make. So a school that was at fifty, if that was their percentage score, they would need to score a fifty-one point five for next year, which is a much more reasonable target.
And it's an annual goal, it's not over the course of six years, each year it will be, it'll start again.
Sounds like a dissertation, doesn't it?
So, the local flexibility, what that talks about is those challenge points. Instead of having programs that were defined by the state that schools could opt into to try to get those points, we now decide what programs are best for our schools. Educating the whole child, that's referring to the beyond the core. So that, now, schools do, will receive points for students who are receiving credit in world language and fine arts courses. That's at elementary level, and then you add in career tech and physical education. So these are the components, and those descriptions out to the side tell you what's in each, or basically, it describes what each component represents. So where I listed those four in the beginning, these are the five new components. And this slide shows those are components again, but it also shows the indicators within the components. Now, we don't have the calculations for the majority of these yet, the DOE has not published those. But we know, under this new design, we expect to see great scores coming out of Forsyth County schools.
And I asked him to slide ahead, because that yellow one, you can actually see that the readiness, the elementary, beyond the core, and the middle, and the high school are similar, but a little bit different.
So this link takes you, will take you to the accountability webpage, and there are detailed CCRPI reports if you're interested in looking at those. And then, of course, we'll be glad to answer any questions, provide you with additional information.
Do you think this is it for the changes, or, because it's kind of big, that's some big changes, it seems like they're gonna have to tweak it the following year at least, right?
Well, the state, one of the nice things is that this redesign is tied into ESSA. So that's the opportunity, that was the big opportunity to revamp the CCRPI system. And so all states are going through this together right now. So our hope is that what is determined, and they've put the information out so early, and they've asked for feedback already, and we've been on the phone every week with the DOE, providing them with questions or feedback on questions they've asked related to the new CCRPI. So it's our hope that whatever is presented this year is what we get to stick with for a long.
And this is the overhaul, if you would, and there might be little tweaks that would have to be made.
So what do you see is the biggest area of improvement that needs to happen in this? Are you satisfied with the measurements, or do you, since you all worked on it for a while?
They're accurate, I believe that the areas that they have chosen are accurate.
Yeah, the committees that made those decisions, it wasn't just made up of state employees. That was personnel from school systems throughout the state at every level, to be able to give that feedback.
Yeah, not just, not just personnel, it was stakeholders from all over the state that were, that were involved, and I would agree with that. Although it has caused some consternation because it changes every year, I think the changes have been positive, though. And so I think it's a better instrument now than it ever, and certainly better than AYB was, when it was really just one number. And you know, you weren't even taking growth into consideration, so hopefully now with ESSA, that we've come up with a CCRPI that will stay the same for a period of time, so that you can really do an accurate year-to-year comparison. But I will say it's better, at least in my opinion, I think it's better than it's ever been.
This part of ESSA is not in question, is that correct? I know that the US government has not approved the plan yet.
January.
But this part is not part of it, is it?
Yes, this is, we'll hear back, the waiver's out at the USD, and we'll hear back hopefully in January.
Okay.
Now, the confidence level is high at the DOE, because we were one of the last states to submit our plan, and based on what was approved for other states, they believe ours will be approved.
Okay, I remember reading about something like that, but I can't remember what it was.
And to your point, although you can't compare really with your score from one year to the next, the one thing you can always do is, how are your students performing in comparison to other students in our, in our state? And so that's, and obviously, that's very favorable, so that we can. Great job, Wes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wunning, ready for our construction update?
Well, fortunately, over the past month, both Alliance Academy and Denmark High School have reached some significant milestones for its construction program. Starting with the aerial at Alliance, you'll see the site is now complete, substantially complete, as well as the exterior envelope for the building, the roof is complete, windows, exterior walls. as well as the exterior envelope for the building. The roof is complete, windows, exterior walls. So that really allows us to now eliminate the development risk of winter and cold weather, which can create perpetual delays. In addition, what you don't see is underneath now, all of the utilities are in place. We do have gas service. That's obviously the backside of the building. The prior area was the front side. So with all the utilities in place now, we have climate control within the building, heating, ventilation. That allows us to now install all the casework, which is one of the last stages of interior finishes, rapidly moving through now at Alliance. And so we're in the final stages of interior finishes and final paint in January, February. So we're extremely well-positioned, and a lot of the things you don't see, we're proactively collaboratively working with information technology. So that infrastructure is taking place right now in the interiors. Things like Comcast, AT&amp;T, all of those data rooms are in progress. So succinctly, and I know it's been a long agenda tonight, we're just, you know, well-positioned for April substantial completion and punch list, which then allows us to furnish with FFNA the building. And all of those meetings have proactively taken place, and procurement is in progress. So we're extremely well-positioned on Alliance. Similarly, at Denmark High School with this area, now the site work is substantially complete for all of the athletic fields and what we call our outbuildings, which is everything really but the four-hundred-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot high school. We're in the final stages of fire marshal inspection. That occurred last week. We do have just some miscellaneous adjustments, which is fairly typical when you're dealing with a hundred-and-ten acres and a fire marshal. So things like emergency lighting for the egress at the bleachers, we're making some small modifications, miscellaneous additional fire extinguishers. But succinctly, the fire marshal will return by the end of this year, in the next couple of weeks. So we're well ahead of schedule for April football that, you know, begins the whole spirit of Denmark. And that's a nice future milestone to look forward to. And so, again, the concept that I described at Alliance, you'll see here, a closer view of the building itself. Again, the roof is complete, the windows installed, curtain wall installed. But unlike Denmark, or excuse me, unlike Alliance, this is a much larger interior footprint at four-hundred-thousand square feet. So currently, the best way to describe what you don't see inside the building is interior finishes are taking place on the right-hand side of the page. And we really run the spectrum of finishes being substantially complete to the point of what I described at Alliance with casework and final painting. But because it's such a large building, we're really just beginning the interior finishes on the left side, which you recall would be the out alternate wing that we added. But again, well-positioned with climate control in place, which is always critical for the, really, development risk. We control our own destiny now in terms of a schedule, taking winter weather off the table. So that's critical. That's the backside view of Denmark. And I just selected one interior photo for a reason. This obviously is the auditorium, performing arts center theater. So what is new is if, when you look at the ceiling, you'll see the panels. So those, instead of acoustical panels, those are referred to as clouds. Not only is it the kind of state-of-the-art aesthetic feature, but it really enhances the sound by reducing echo, reducing reverberation. But the real reason I picked that photo is although we have the prototypes, right, we try to always strive for some new technology that really in the construction industry doesn't occur as often as, say, information technology. But where we, you know, can pick and choose our spots, cost-effective design. It's just a great, I think, crisp, clean design, you know, and effective use of pragmatic design and functional, but gives a little more of the pizzazz to our schools. So that's a good indication of just some of the interior progress we're making. And, you know, the classrooms are the classrooms, but I thought theater's a little bit different, so I would show you that photo. Any questions on the program?
No, it was just impressive. I remember when we started Alliance, it was gonna be down to, you were, the schedule was so tight to get that done in time. It was like we didn't have a month or two to spare, and the fact that you are, I think, had a schedule, knock on, I'll say that aloud, but you're very on schedule is amazing.
Yeah, it was great. Great, great firms and people involved in everything, so.
Sounds good, exciting.
Appreciate it.
Have a good holiday. Thank you.
You too.
All right, a long meeting tonight. Next, we have an IGA with Forsyth County Schools, Forsyth Government, Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, America Traffic Solutions. Stop our cameras.
Thank you. Our office had a chance to walk Alliance the other, these were my papers, by the way, Tom. Sandy didn't say a word to you. I thought you were throwing them away. We had a chance to walk Alliance to do some, just looking around at some of the safety features there, or some of the safety concerns that we might have coming up. It's just unbelievable. Our office caused dibs on the fundraiser to sell tickets for July the fourth, so we can watch from the roof of Alliance, because it has the best view in this county. We're gonna talk real quick about two intergovernmental agreements that I'm gonna ask that Dr. Bearden seek your approval to sign. The first one is the memorandum of understanding between Forsyth County and the Forsyth County School District. It is the short three-page version. Essentially, what this intergovernmental agreement does is it provides money to the solicitor's office to be able to fund the stop-on program. What we do know and realize is that there will be people that will contest their tickets. Although the percentages statistically to this point are very low. In our county, we think that there will be a number that will do that. So we will have to have someone at the solicitor's office to schedule that, so that those people will have the opportunity to contest that, as it is a civil violation. It is split up into three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month payment, which equates to approximately, well, about forty thousand dollars a year, which was our agreement with their office. Those funds are paid for out of the stop-on money that is coming in. Please understand that both of these intergovernmental agreements, they cost the district zero. Our contract with ATS costs the district zero. We're sort of sitting in the catbird seat. Our ultimate goal is to stop people from passing our buses when the stop-ons are out, which we know right now is a problem. The second is sort of a combination of our SRO contract, which is a yearly contract, as well as an addition in there of the ATS contract. Our ATS contract is fairly lengthy, and it is still back and forth between the attorneys involved. But this will provide the intergovernmental agreement that will allow us to work with the sheriff's office in continuing our SRO program that we currently operate. There's really very little changes in here, other than maybe on Section 10, I believe it is, compensation. You will see that part in reference to ATS. Essentially, what we are asking is that ATS, we maintain the two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-dollar-a-year compensation to the sheriff's office for our SRO program, which is a very, very low compensation, considering we are operating now with about twenty-five SROs. And that includes the ones that are in the building, north end sergeant, south end sergeant, and a lieutenant over the entire program. So it is a very low compensation. But the ATS funds that will come back to us, ATS takes forty percent of the tickets recovered. We will get, I'm sorry, they take sixty percent. We will receive forty percent. And that money will go to pay off the salaries of the SROs to support that program. Once we reach the totality of their salaries, everything else will be directed into school safety for anything that we need to do moving forward. So I would ask that Dr. Bearden, and ask your permission to have Dr. Bearden sign both intergovernmental agreements.
Yeah, and before I do recommend approval, I just wanna thank again Forsyth County Government, Forsyth County Sheriff's Department, and all the staff here on this collaborative agreement. Were you gonna talk specifics about how many buses? Are we getting into that?
We can. I can bring Mike up. Mike, we're already retrofitting the buses. And I will say this, they've been phenomenal.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just give a quick overview of the.
Let me just say thank you to Major Patton for being here tonight to represent the sheriff. We really appreciate that.
Hey there. I'll be happy to provide my review. I guess, as you remember back in July, when we started having a conversation about this program, the numbers that we were receiving, we're required every year to collect data on how often our buses are being passed by vehicle traffic when their stop-ons are out and students are either letting or loading the bus. That happens on April twenty-sixth, or it did this year. On that day, we had a hundred-and-eighty-nine vehicles pass our buses while their stop-ons were out. If you calculate that out over a hundred-and-eighty-day school year, that's over thirty-four thousand passes.
I was about to ask if they thought we would have the money to pay all this, if there would be that many tickets. I can't, like, there's that many.
Yeah, and what we've done, what we did this fall is we worked with ATS. They provided us with their traffic study. We combined that with information we collected from drivers and supervisors within our department. The initial rollout is gonna be thirty cameras, with the option to add more. And we've placed those cameras strategically on buses that we can move throughout the district based on what the need is and where we see the safety needs as being. That installation, that installation will be absolutely complete, finished, and ready to go by the time these government agreements are signed, and there are some steps taken prior to implementation in January.
Well, to your point, Darla, American Traffic Solutions, obviously, this is all research-based when they come up with a contract. And they know, based on the data that they received, that they can arm thirty buses and this be a profitable experience for them, or they wouldn't be entering into this agreement. So, you know, it is alarming when you hear a statistic like what Mike just gave, and it's a, it's a problem. And we think this is going to really help cut that problem down. Talk about the offenses per citation. Do you have that data? I think the first one's.
The first one is written, three hundred dollars. The second is seven, or seven-fifty, I think, and then the third is a thousand. Now, statistically, what they have shared with us is that you have very few reoccurring offenses. If you hit with three hundred dollars, you don't wanna be hit with the next one, which is seven hundred.
They're gonna give some kind of a PR.
Yeah, so that part of that, we work with American Traffic Solutions, and Jennifer will be putting out PR information on it. But if you commit that violation, what will be sent to your house is a photo of your car with your license plate and you committing the act. So it's pretty hard to dispute whether or not you actually. It's a front and back. They're catching you from both sides of the bus.
And so that's why they have such a high rate of people just paying the ticket, 'cause there's really nothing. Basically, the only time someone refutes it's if they weren't driving.
Right. That's the majority of their arguments, is that we weren't driving the vehicle.
So I remember, if we, so we start out with thirty cameras. If we increase it, does the compensation all remain the same?
Everything remains the same. The percentages all stay the same. You know, our ultimate goal as a district is to decrease, you know, decrease the number of stop-on violations. Any compensation that we receive on top of that, that's fine. But we think that the fact that it goes back into the SRO program is huge, because we have a lot of SROs right now, and we have a tremendous amount of support. And obviously, the solicitor's office has to receive some compensation, because I would anticipate they're gonna have somebody that's gonna be reasonably busy once this thing really kicks in. Certainly if we add more to that. And they're not going to, they're not going to be taking money from us unless ATS can generate that money. So this is all contingent on ATS being able to generate the money, and they're not here to not generate money.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is no risk for us whatsoever. And I'll give credit again to Sheriff Freeman and his staff. I mean, from the very beginning, it was never about, this is an opportunity to generate revenue. This was a safety issue. And that's what it's all about. The revenue that comes in, that's great. We'll be able to put that money into our school resource officer program. Anything extra go into school safety, but this is about safety of kids. And as Mike has pointed out to you guys before, where students get hurt in transportation is typically not when they're on the bus, it's when they're entering or exiting. And this is that situation.
Or that poor crossing guard in Cobb County. It's heartbreaking. So this goes on through 2021 unless something falls apart?
Yeah.
Yep. So with that, did you have anything that you wanted to add from Sheriff's Department?
I'm sorry. Not a lot. Tom Patton, we work together. All I would say is, you would make, we've written only a hundred-and-eighty-six violations, and you heard about the thousands that are being committed. And the challenge for us is to not put children at risk twice, chasing a violator past a stopped school bus. So it is a very difficult law for us to enforce safely. And so automating that enforcement is just a huge step in the right direction for everyone. So we're fully supportive of this initiative. I would also add that I came to Forsyth County from Alpharetta PD, where we worked with ATS on red light enforcement. We found them to be a good partner to work with. They're very professional. They know what they're doing. And it was just a good arrangement for everyone concerned. Now, it will drive down violations, so I know we all say that we're here for safety and not revenue generation. And I just wanna be clear that that's what will happen. It will improve safety, but it will not continue to generate the level of offenses that we'll see initially. So thank you all for your, for your work with us on this.
Well, thanks for working with us. We appreciate it. Okay, with that, is it okay to take them together? 'Cause there's two different IGAs here. Can I recommend approval of both of the IGAs that Mr. Shirley recommended?
Do we have a motion to approve both IGAs? Motion by Tom, a second by Ann, all in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the 2018 meeting dates, and I think that's been on there, and there's just been one minor suggestion for the January.
Yes, one minor change in January. Instead of the sixteenth, I'm recommending we have that meeting on the twenty-third instead. It's still on Tuesday nights, as we did this past year. That seemed to work well with everyone. So with that, I would recommend approval of the 2018 Board of Education meeting dates.
Your motion? So moved. Motion by Nancy, a second by Ann, all in favor? That is unanimous. And next up, the local facilities planned adoption certification. Mr. Amerson?
On December sixth, we had six survey team members from the facility administrations surrounding county come through. We've your plan. I realize a few of y'all were able to attend the final summation of the meeting. But the Forsyth County, this is the sixth five-year plan that I've completed since nineteen ninety-nine. So fortunately, we are on official five-year schedule from now on. So we did have the plan. We had no recommendations, changes requested on that. The key thing is, is as of June, our total lead that we had identified following the applications for the Denmark High School and the Alliance Academy, and all the projects we completed from the 2014 bond, we still had about fifty-five million dollars in identified needs with the state. Now, we do keep updating that annually with the administrative reports. But really digging in for the five-year plan, we've now identified with the five-year projection taking us to the fifty-five thousand students, the two new elementaries, middle school and high school, and even a few students left over. We now have a hundred-and-two million dollars of state identified needs that they will help us, work with us on future funding. So with that, I've got also kind of two parts. I asked that y'all approve Dr. Bearden to certify the team report, and that y'all adopt the five-year facility plan to be submitted to the State Department of Education to become our plan from July first, 2017, through June thirtieth, 2022.
And not coincidentally, that aligns with the bond project list, obviously. And also wanted to say, there were ten commendations that were given to Tim and his team on the, on the visit. And they could have given a lot more, as they said, but they were required to keep it to only ten. But he, yeah, awesome job. So thank you, Bill. Thank you. Greg, everybody who was involved. Thank you very much. With that, I recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Say.
Motion by Ann, a second by Darla. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. You should have brought the books, because they were mighty impressive. They were two, you got one little piece of paper, and that's not at all.
Bringing the two books from this one, and the first book from nineteen ninety-nine, just to share what they. I thought we were bringing the two books from this one and the first book from 1999, just to share what they.
They did speak very highly of your work.
See y'all back in five years, right?
That's enough. All right. Anything exciting, points of information, Dr. Bearden?
Nothing more to add.
We are good. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel? Ask for the affidavit.
So moved.
Second, a motion by Tom, a second by Nancy. All in favor? That's unanimous.